All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It's now 6 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call our Finance Committee meeting to order. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight to discuss the budget for 2021 and going forward. Tonight, we would have a discussion somewhat with our department heads. As you recall, last week, we spoke with the committee as a whole, met, spoke with Jason, and kind of got a larger overview of the budget. And we have quorum tonight. Tyrell's here in person, and then Counselor Chavis and Counselor Chevlot are on the phone with us. All right. So to begin with, we'll just run down our agenda, and then at the end, we'll make our recommendations, and then also see if we have any public comments. So to begin with, we'll talk about proposal number eight, appropriation for tax rates for the 2020-21 budget year. Is there, do I have any committee members that would like to hear from a specific department head before we begin?
Department heads coming up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah. We always like to hear from our chief of police and fire. I guess whichever one wants to start there.
Absolutely. So whoever won the wing contest should come up first the last time.
He lost, right?
He lost, yes. Thank you, Chief Hoffman. Chief Vatalis, good evening. We just wanted to hear kind of a general overview of the budget, how you feel 2021's going to look like, are your needs addressed in this budget? Is there other things that you might need that you don't see in there? There's more things, you know, just some general overview as you're going through, please.
For me, am I mis-
No, please.
We knew this was going to be a little bit of a tough year. However, this, about March 8th or 9th, when this thing first started, we had a lot of close conversations with the mayor and controller. There was a lot of shortage of things, but I can tell you that we worked through all that. We were probably better prepared than most departments in the county because of the supply we had. So, and even now, because of that, there's so many months this went on, other departments in the area are kind of suffering with supplies. And I can tell you, just because of Looking Ahead, the Controller, and the mayor, and actually, which I don't want to give them credit, Tyler, with Looking Ahead, we've gotten our supply where we shouldn't really run into shortages, and I think that we did extremely well with what we were handed on such short notice. Looking forward into next year's budget, it looks like, you know, cautious, but, you know, everything that we talked about and our needs, I feel like have been met. I don't think we're short in anything, in anything we've asked for. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna be able to handle without any issues. So unless you have any specific questions, I just feel as far as the fire department and our EMS, I think we're in pretty good shape now in moving forward. Like I said, it just depending, you know, how, you know, what happens in the next couple of months, there's a lot of different supplies, not just gloves and gowns. There's a lot of supplies that are associated with COVID. And so, and we worked close with the police department because we were more prepared as far as the PP where we should be, and we're trying to relieve some of those officers. And I think it showed because I don't think they really had any exposures. We were trying to tell our people to get in there first. It was not a hostile environment to get in there because they had full PP. And so if you run into somebody that's, that has positive, you've got zero exposure in the other part of PP on. So I think public safety, it was a joint effort between both departments, the way everything was handled, and I'm happy with the way things went.
I do have one question before you jump over. So the majority of the reimbursements that we're looking at are coming to your department, if I understand it correctly, as far as EMS and some of the other things that the controllers requested?
We were on meetings, some of those meetings were three and four times a day. We've turned in all the times that we are, those meetings, supplies, medical supplies. So all that was given to the Controller's office to help with that reimbursement. That's correct.
If the reimburse, if the city of Indianapolis doesn't provide those reimbursements, is your budget harmed in 2021? Do we need to look at other things going on?
I have more of a question for Jason. I don't know if-
Okay. He walked up here to give you his assist? Yeah.
No. In fact, to back up to answer the first question, so of the approximate 710,000, 11,000 that has been allocated to Lawrence, we've submitted our first request, which was for approximately 450,000. All of that was fire and EMS related, so the bulk of that will go to the fire department. What will be submitted after that will be the other departments. The second question is on his budget. No, it won't have an impact on next year's budget if we don't receive any of those reimbursements. Obviously, the positive of that is if we do get it, it is an expense reimbursement, so it will certainly just effectively free up expenditures this year and almost just go to the cash balance for now. So it should not have an impact for next year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We ordered a lot of these supplies, again with the controller, we ordered a lot of these supplies before these prices really got out of hand. They're not supposed to be doing it, but there's a lot of people that we use now that have like doubled their prices on what supplies we use on a day-to-day basis. So that helped us to order in ahead of time like that.
Wow. All right. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, please. We got our fire on equipment with our truck. Our truck did come in this year, right? The engine, the ladder, doing?
The engine is due here next week.
Next week? Okay.
Everything got delayed. It was supposed to have been here early part of September, and it got delayed, actually July, and then with the COVID, it got delayed, and they're going to do the final inspection on it the 29th, so we should have it physically here in the first week of October.
Okay, great.
We just took delivery of an ambulance about a month and a half ago.
Okay, great.
All right. Chief Hoffman, thank you for your patience.
It's my pleasure.
So the, Counselor Denny, I have a question. This is Counselor Chavis.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So there's a 39.1% increase year-over-year for fire. I'm assuming that a percentage of that 39.1% is overtime and possibly supplies. Can either the chief or Controller Fenwick tell us what represents that 39.1% increase?
He's on his way up here. The controller's walking up, please, just one second.
Could you maybe provide a little more specifics on where, I assume you're looking at the budget proposal?
Yes.
And what page number are you referring, or?
So page, page number 33. The fire for 2020, the revised budget was $9,456.72, and then for 2021, it's $9,909.734.
So the, the 39%, that's the percentage of the general fund that the fire budget comprises?
So let me restate that. The $452,982 change.
Yes, so that, in order to kind of address in the EMS fund where the, due to the revenue loss, I moved some expenditures out of the EMS fund for fire into the general fund. So the main increase was, for fire, was in principal and interest, which was about a $335,000 increase, which was previously in the EMS fund and now is in the general fund?
Well, $335,000 of the $452 represents that.
Yes, and then, um, yeah, there were some kind of smaller $10,000 increases here and there. The workman's comp and liability was about $27,500 of it. We did increase on the health, employee health insurance, that budget amount was up $30,000 as well, just given, not that our healthcare premiums have gone up, it's simply the city's contribution for the fully staffed department, that's the number required to meet that obligation. So, but like I said, the bulk of that was that principal and interest.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Chevlot, do you have any questions?
I've got a general question. It's not necessarily, it's for Chief Hoffman. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Wonderful. I'm just curious, given that you've been in your new house for the last year, and those of us who were on the council last time were in full support of getting your own police station, and I think overall, from what I hear, that has been wildly successful as far as helping you and your officers conduct more private investigations and conversations with detainees, et cetera. Without getting too deep into the line items of the budget, were there any, is there anything that you can share with the council that there were some expenses that we didn't anticipate when we built the station that we're now seeing in this budget? Above and beyond what we thought?
Right. So the first year of our occupancy, we had several repairs that were non-warranty related that we had to find funding for in our budget that we had not planned on those. I went into the project with the false assumption that the first, kind of like in residential or when you buy a car or a major purchase, that really everything, it's bumper-to-bumper coverage for that first year, and that was not the case. And so we had, did have some expenses associated with the heating and ventilation of the building and tweaking some of those settings and some of the thermostats. We had a couple non-dangerous issues with some wiring that needed to be corrected. And then, of course, when the landscaping came in, we had, we knew we were going to be paying for some, for some mowing and fertilizing and things like that, but the first year of a new yard, essentially, requires a lot more upkeep than we anticipated. So overall, we're not blown away by anything, and we have a much better grasp now on the ongoing maintenance and repairs and things that are happening, things that we have at home, air filters, for example, just the rock salt in our water softener. So those kinds of just ongoing things that we have planned for. The short answer is really no major surprises, Counselor Chevlot, on a project of this size. I've been told that, you know, unexpected things do happen, and they did, but nothing that we can't live with and overcome and plan for next year and years to come.
Okay. Thank you.
We may have got a little bit ahead of ourselves. Did you have some things to add?
I was just going to echo some of Dino's sentiments. We were instructed by the Controller's office, and we did adopt a very cautious and conservative approach for 2021's budgeting. As far as the police department's concerned, we're scaling back on our planned purchase of vehicles. Mayor Collier and Controller Fenwick have got us really on a, almost like a secular purchase and replace plan, so we're not piecemealing our orders of cars. We have a planned approach every year to our purchase of vehicles, and next year, we're deviating from that plan. We're going to reduce our purchase of vehicles. Hopefully, in 2022 and beyond, we'll get back on track with that. Our fuel consumption this year was down quite a bit, so, and we were able, thanks largely to the Lawrence Fire Department and many of the donors that came through with masks and hand sanitizer, LFD Chief Vatalis himself on many occasions came through and disinfected our many high-use areas of our building, our roll call room, our 911 center, our fitness center, with kind of a fogger, kind of a disinfectant type of, so because of that, I'm proud to say we had, only had one, out of 115 employees for the past nine months, only one confirmed case of COVID, and that person learned of it from a routine doctor's appointment where he had no symptoms. So he was able to quarantine, and now he's back to duty, and we are currently, as far as I know, knock on wood, it could change, but we have no, no employees who are out of commission due to COVID. And because of that, we've been able to live very much within our overtime budget this year. We're under budget on our overtime. Now, police officers, different than firefighters, we don't all live together for 24 hours a day and then 48. So the nature of our interactions allowed us, I think, to be spared from a lot of the COVID exposures and cases that fire departments really everywhere saw. So that's, if that helps, I know I'm kind of deviating from the idea of a line item budget, but to, short answer to your question, I'm very confident that 2021, we're going to have all of our needs met and beyond. So I think the cautious approach is paying off.
Very, very.
This, I have a question.
Please.
And this is not in line with what you were speaking of, but this might be for Jason, but I just want to confirm. I'm looking at the police budget, and there's a principal and interest payments in here. Are those the payments on the building?
They are not. The principal and interest for police is related to the police vehicles, so we've entered into lease agreements on those, and they'd be for the payment of those.
Controller Fenwick, while you're up here, let me ask you a quick question that, when the chief was talking made me think about it. So we saw a sharp reduction in the cost of fuel in the last few months. Did that help your budget for 2020 going into 2021? I mean-
It did, yes. We, you know, in fact, we did notice a, especially with police, a sizable drop in the monthly, you know, use, consumption of gasoline for March, April, and May. So, yeah, that, everything helps.
Where do you hold those savings, or how do you?
Those are out of the Public Safety Tax Fund, so, which is obviously one of the funds that could be impacted, you know, because it is income tax-based, so, yeah, everything helps in that fund.
And in 2021, do you budget a certain dollar amount for the fuel? Are we under that, over that, do you think?
Typically, the approach on fuel has been, because it can be volatile in terms of the pricing, so we've tended to be conservative in the sense that we've probably budgeted more than we think we're going to need, such that if, you know, for whatever reason, we got a spike in gas prices, we could, you know, hopefully cover that. So I do believe what's been budgeted for next year would definitely be adequate absent, you know, some significant shock to the oil prices.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Jason, one follow-up. There's a $100,000 difference in that principal. Is that based that we were anticipating buying new cars?
Um, what page?
A $100,000 increase between 2020 and 21.
Which page?
Page 141. That principal and interest that you're talking about with ghosts and cars.
151.
141.
Say 151?
141.
Oh. He said 51. So, yes, there is an increase. So what we talked about during the budget discussions with the police department was it's not a yes, nor is it a no, on vehicles for next year. It all's based upon the uncertainty of the income tax. So I did budget the potential to do vehicles for next year, but I wanted to see where the income tax revenue actually came in before we committed to say, yes, we're going to buy some. So if the income tax is better than expected, we'll probably do some vehicles. If it's worse than expected, we won't. So that's, that's that difference.
Counselor Chevlot or Counselor Chavis, do either of you have questions? Public safety?
I, I just have one other general question, Chairman Denny.
Yeah, please ask.
Yeah, so, so last year, I believe that there was something that was proposed, may not been before the council, but, actually, this is for Chief Hoffman. And there was something that was brought, brought up, and it was about giving a stipend or giving some type of reimbursement to our reserve officers for the vehicles. And it was something to the effect that there would be a payment of these vehicles by the city, but after a period of time, the reserve officers would then retain ownership. Can you update us on where that is and if that is part of this budget?
That's the Reserve Vehicle Lease Program that the Board of Works approved. It allows up to four reserve officers to purchase out of their own, out of their own money, their police cars. They would be vehicles that would be approved by the Michigan State Police, and they have a, they have a program for this, and the vehicles would be allowable for personal use for the reserve officers. And in exchange for their on-duty usage, a minimum of 32 hours a month for the city of Lawrence in police service, in exchange for that, the city would agree to perform maintenance and provide fuel for those. And it was kind of a win-win, and we went into this lease program, Counselor, because at the time that we conceived this idea, many of our reserve officers were driving vehicles that were, quite frankly, not to the point of being unsafe, but extremely high mileage and just not in good condition. So this was an option. I will say, since then, this was heralded as gonna, it was gonna be kind of groundbreaking, and every, a lot of people were gonna do it, a lot of reserve officers, and since then, we've been able to purchase new vehicles for our full-time paid officers, and their former vehicles are being trickled down to the Reserve Division now, and they're in, they're in pretty good, they're in good condition, they're just slightly higher mileage, and we're trying to get the most out of them by giving them to reserve officers who don't, they don't patrol as much, they don't, there's less wear and tear on those older vehicles.
Yeah, thank you. And I just, just as clarification, but I cannot thank the reserve officers enough because they are giving of their own time at a great cost to them for all of their equipment and their time away from their families. So I appreciate that clarification. I just hadn't heard anything about this in a while, and I just wanted to get some clarification if any of this was into this budget, but thank you, chief. I appreciate it, and please let the reserve officers know. We all appreciate what they do on behalf of the city at no cost to the city.
I will do that and pass that along. Thank you for your comments, and just to reiterate, there's really nothing in this budget that has anything to do with the Reserve Vehicle Lease Agreement.
Got it. Thank you.
And thank you both, and please say-
Counselor Denny and I have, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, and this may be a Controller Fenwick question. It's as it relates to the other employee benefits, page 68, 413-011. Perhaps I missed it, but could he explain the, I guess, our actual budget for, it just seems like there's a big change, and I just wanted to know what that is related to.
You're, so you said you were on page 68?
Yeah, so like for 2019, it was 390,283, and then we had a revised budget of 200,250.
So that line-
So that's just the cost went down?
No, that, that line item is where we budget the payouts for retirement anticipations. And so obviously, in 2019, we had more retirements than anticipated. Usually, I would think if you get three to four retirements in a year, the 200 should cover that. It's possible it would not, but I don't believe, trying to recall, Chief Hoffman, do we have any known retirements for next year?
We do not.
So right now, we, yeah, we aren't anticipating needing that money, but as you know, sometimes retirements aren't planned, and they can just pop up as well.
Okay. So that's potentially, that's potentially money that we may or may not use for 2021.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for public safety? Thank you to fire and police. Both of you have done a tremendous job in 2020, and especially working through the COVID and all the work that you've put out into the community so far. We, I would not anticipate anything different in 2021, so thank you so far for what you've done. I guess just moving down to the next department heads, maybe Public Works and Streets? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out tonight. Just if you could, just a general overview of how you see 2021, and then some questions from the council, the committee, excuse me.
Our 21 budget really didn't take too big of a hit. The only hit we took was the Community Crossings Grant, was our paving, road repaving. That's about all we really got. Ain't gone, everything else, we're solid.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Please.
This year, if I remember right, in 2019, or 2020, maybe 2019 was the first year of us, or our newly bought street sweeper? How did that program work this year? How did, how did it go?
Were great. The whole city's been swept once. We swept the bridges probably four or five times. We even took the initiative to sweep Pendleton Pike here about two weeks ago because it's, that's a mess. Yeah, it was great.
Do you think that, that is something, would it ever be a reasonable goal of Lawrence to try to expand that program? You know, I've been in other cities where you see signs up where it's like, move your, can't park here on Thursday because the street sweeper's coming through, and some of those, you know, and so I didn't know if that's something that we would think about considering some of our maybe more high-dense areas in the city?
We usually sweep the old city twice, so it's been pretty much swept twice, but-
Twice a year or twice a month?
Twice a year.
Right. But see, you know, in other places, they sweep once a month.
Like, for instance, lawyer?
I can tell you Oakland, California, for sure. You can't park your car on the left side of the street on every Wednesday. They come through, they sweep the curb on one side, it comes back through on the other side. And I'm just saying, I'm not saying that our city is small, the reason I'm getting at is this, our city is small enough, and I'm trying to figure out ways that we could separate ourself from the big boy in Marion County. So one of the ideas or thoughts was, if we're cleaner, it's noticeable. And so I know that you guys are pressed doing everything you can with what you got. I just didn't know, we're in a budget time. I'm not saying that it's something for this year, but I'm just asking, as we try to move our city forward, cleanliness is something that I do hear from constituents, you know? So I'm trying to prove that.
So you would have to run a sweeper every day? I mean, you'd have to sweep the streets every, every day, which is pretty tough.
Is that a staffing issue or a maintenance issue on the machine itself, or?
We got two machines. We can do it. Yeah, we're good. It's just, it's, to me, the streets aren't really in all that bad a shape. In areas, they are, yes. Whole part of town, yes. Would help if we could get people to quit blowing their grass, their leaves.
They're not gonna do that, right? That's why cities pay for them to do it, you know? They're not gonna do that.
Go behind and clean them up.
So I'm just, you know, they're not gonna do that. And I know with the resources that we have, twice a year maybe, we didn't even have a sweeper working just a few years ago. So, I mean, we're coming along, I mean, we're coming along, so don't-
We have two sweepers now.
Right, we have two sweepers now, so it's not in any criticism way.
Stand in town.
It's just that I know-
Taking care of big boy Pendleton Pike, because they just don't do it.
Right. And I just know that when it comes to our regular constituents, many of the things that we discussed today are not the things that our people talk about, and, but of course, are the things that you need to run a municipality. So this is just an effort to try to give people a little taste of what they want to see and what they want. I understand that we can't make this, you know, Beverly Hills or whatever, for say, but I would like to, just for the record, I would like to, for us to try to find a way to clean the streets with our street sweeper more than twice a year. Quarterly, possibly? And if you need more money, then now is the time to discuss that.
Money's, you know, money's not an option. You just gotta have the time to do it.
If I hire, you need to hire another guy?
Don't need another guy. I'm fully staffed. I got, fully staffed in 2020. I'm good.
Any other questions for Street?
I'm gonna leave it alone, but it doesn't seem that we're walking towards a way of solution, so I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Well, I mean, in your essence, if you want to hire more employees, that gives me less money to- less money to do for the budget, do what I need to do.
I'm asking you, what do you need to sweep the city more than three times a year? If that's an employee, if that's additional truck, if that's more hours for a guy? I don't know what that is, that's why I'm asking you. I expect you to know what you need to do to increase the streets and I'll give you more money if money is what you need. But I know that the people in this community are asking about a cleaner neighborhood. This is not me, these are the people, you know? And I'm just saying that I'm just bringing something to the table during this time that my people in the community legitimately ask about.
Swept twice a year, so.
And people throw trash out every day.
Go back cleaning up every time they do it. See, that's the problem I find.
Yeah.
Add something to that, and I don't want to speak for Jim and how he managed his department, but I will say if he were going to do more frequent street sweeping, my best guess is you're gonna need more personnel. The problem we have right now in the street department is the gas tax. Given the issues we've had this year, I don't personally believe we would be able to do that next year, but it's certainly something that we could look to try to achieve down the road as things rebound and we have a better clarity on where our revenue situation's going to be after we get through this whole COVID-19.
Thank you.
There's another machine, isn't it? It's got a large vacuum attached to it.
Mechanical in a, in a vacuum sweeper, yes.
What, what is the usage on that or?
The mechanical sweeper picks up more debris.
Okay.
Vacuum is like a vacuum, it doesn't pick up heavy debris. Like after winter, that's when we hit heavy.
Okay.
I have another question.
Please, go ahead.
Shadlin, when we come off the highway to 46th Street. It's bad. And it's a high use, you know? I don't know if that's our responsibility, if that's Indianapolis', you know, I don't know, but it's bad and we come out, we patch, I mean, because like if we have a big hole, we patch, but you know, it's the same crater right in front of mine, you know, I can just tell you, you know, and so personally I pull out on that, but my concern a little bit is that is such a heavy thoroughfare coming off the highway and at times it's such a high speed, I've seen cars take on some pretty big deals there and the whole road is down and up, so I don't know if that is on, we did assess, I know we did a street assessment and I didn't know if that was something that was coming.
Is that ours to replace?
Yeah, Shadlin is a thoroughfare, so the maintenance is on us, the patching, pothole patching and, you know, stuff is on us, cleaning is on us too, per, because of the thoroughfare. Indianapolis is supposed to do any major reconstruction. So if any repaving or just like the community crossing stuff that we do on other smaller streets, would not apply to Shadlin. Shadlin is a thoroughfare, that's Indianapolis, just like 56th Street.
All we could do is patch a little bit, but we can't come in there and, and re, that's what, and that's what I wanted to know and I think it's good for this to come out in a public forum so people can under, can, can understand that because again, that's another common complaint.
56th Street Indianapolis was planning to have a project on 56th Street in front of the school for that block where the community's really bad. I just learned last week that Indianapolis is putting a hold on that project because of lack of funds, so.
Right.
Again, it's a big project, so it was supposed to go, now it's not, it's not moving, so. And all we can do is patch it, pothole.
Right, yeah, it's a tough one right there.
We'll stay focused on the budget side of it then for 2021 and think about future projects when we get into.
I always didn't know, is now's the time that you put money in the budget for it to happen next year? If we want to make it happen, we can, I mean, we can't do that because of regulation, but we can put anything we want in the budget right now, so everything is pertinent to what goes on in the city right now, because we can, I mean, we have the power to turn this budget, we want to turn it. I mean, I know the Controller doesn't want that, but we do.
So with the, go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
No, I'm just saying, that's the only reason we pulled you in. I want to have, not very often do, do the, do the department heads have an opportunity to come and stand and talk to us in a general sense. Typically, if they come in, they're talking about one particular ordinance or deal and so we're here and the budget is open and so that was the reason that we did that. So that's why I put some inquiries and some questions out there on water stuff. I'm very happy with what our, what our street departments are doing, very happy with, with the amount of paving we've done here in the City of Lawrence, the matching dollars, I mean, we're moving in all the right direction. I'm just trying to make Lawrence the greatest city in Indiana.
There we go, there we go. So for 2021, how do you feel about the salting when we get into the beginning of the year?
Yeah, we probably still have about 1,200 tons of salt left over from last year.
Wow.
Our 2020 budget, we've got, I think it's 1,500 tons. Should be getting stacked in our barn here within a month or two.
You have to buy a significant amount more, it sounds like you're pretty good.
We've got, we can start off with what we got right now and probably get us to, to March. We're, we're in good shape and so. Next year was not a very good winter for us, I mean, we didn't have to do much, nothing.
With the gas tax kind of taking a hit for you all next year, are you looking at more patching you think than, than redoing some of the roads or what you're planning?
Strip patching, yes, it's in the budget, strip patching.
Counselor.
Chairman?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Chairman Denny?
Yes sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I, given that we've kind of opened this up a little bit and with Mr. Henigan and Sri there, I, I just, first off, I, you guys have just done an amazing job under these situations where you've had a limited staff to be able to go out and mow and cut trees back. You, you and I have traded, I don't know, half a dozen texts or emails, maybe more on situations or issues within the 5th District, but just going forward, I know that there's been some talk about maybe contracting out some of the mowing, but, but can you, can you kind of give us an update? Is this budget, does this capture trying to get ahold of some of these issues where there's high grass and vacant lots? I know Counselor Freeman has talked about this often. I know that you and I have traded a couple texts about situations, so can you kind of give us an idea, do, do you have the funding available in this budget to be able to get ahold of some of these areas that, not, not necessarily paving, but the mowing and trimming back of trees and rightaways?
So this year, like you know, we, we hired a contractor to do all the high weed grass and trash pickup that started a couple of months ago, so I think, I think we are, yeah, I think we have enough money in the budget for, I think under DPW, to continue that contract for next year, so Jim's crews can concentrate on the right-of-way grass cutting and any, any violations and high weed and grass and trash pickup, it will be contracted out just like we are doing right now. The money is located in the budget for that.
Okay, thank you.
We are currently contracting out grass cutting?
Right, just, just, just because we were falling behind with all the patching and stuff and we were falling behind on the high weed and grass violations and getting a lot of calls, so we had to get a couple of codes and hire a contractor to do that.
I gotta go to the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In the past, we had, I remember, and I don't know if this was proper, maybe we're getting away from it, but in the past, we had Parks Department guys cutting city grass and city guys cutting Parks Department grass and there was some interchanging, I know of duties in the past, that's not correct?
No, we cut the rightaways, everything in the rightaway, we mow, the parks got their own grass to cut.
And there was no transferring of, of guys cutting, different department guys cutting grasses and stuff like that, no?
We've all got plenty to cut our own.
So let me, let me be very clear, the, the contract that we are doing is only for the high weed and grass violations? We usually get the money back when we file the lien on the property, so this is for the court enforcement and they go in and find out that the grass is taller, we send them an notice for 15 days and if they don't cut it, we hire the contractor. Usually it was.
Oh, right.
Then we hire, get the contractor, we invoice them back and we put a lien on them. So usually at the end of the year, we collect that money back.
It's just the residential stuff, this is not our regular job stuff, this is the residential stuff.
But we used to do that in the past.
Right, we cut it ourselves and then we charge them back, you ain't got time for that. Okay.
We, we, we may get some of that money back at the end of the year.
Excellent. Counselor Chavis or Counselor Chavat, do you have any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
I don't have any.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you gentlemen, I really appreciate the insight and the information. All right, so the next, I just wonder if maybe Parks had anything they'd like to add? I know you have your own committee, your own board that we hear from and can watch on Facebook, but your, your budget's in the book, so we'd like to, to hear a little bit.
Thanks for the invite. The general budget is down 6%, but it will not affect the general operation of the department next year. During the budget process, we went through and looked at a lot of those items. Chief mentioned fuel for one thing, the lower price of fuel. We had allocated $30,000 and a half for several years. We went through and looked at our billings for 19, 18, 17, 18, 19 and saw that we were spending about 15 grand, so we, we took some of those monies out of those, those line items, so that's where we came up with the initial, just a little over $100,000 that we'll be cutting from the general budget. With regards to the non-reverting budget, it's on schedule for fully funded next year, but we've had a lot of difficulties with reservations and facility and reservations this year, so we're hoping that we get to open back up and those numbers come up for 2020, 2021, so, and we get back to the full amount in our non-reverting fund.
Do you feel building maintenance or grounds maintenance is kind of taking a hit because of the lack of reservations or lack of use?
No, I mean, we generally have enough budget in our, in our general fund to, for those, for those expenditures, so no, I don't think we'll have an effect. And the perfection group did a lot of our HVAC and lighting this year, so that helped us out with the community center in Gin Park.
Okay.
Getting those updated, so hopefully we'll have some cost savings there also.
And is there any other general questions for Parks? I'm just curious then, so you mentioned Gin Park and what about the, the dog park? Every time I drive past, there's always plenty of people there utilizing our dog park.
It's holding, so I wouldn't say it's a for-profit venture, but it does, those people that, that are members there are proud of it and, and we actually increased the cost $10 this year, so, and we're looking at a lot of our reservations and adjusting our fees, like the Steret Center and Gin Park and other ones, especially the cultural campus going in. Gin, Steret Center will be a little more marketable for us, so we hope to increase our revenue there.
What do you feel is the, the biggest bright spot of the park going into 2021?
That everybody gets out and can enjoy it, is what we're hoping. We did have a lot, even with the COVID, it seemed like there's a lot more people using community park, you can go out there just about every day and there's hundreds of people going up and down the sledding hill. It's some fitness craze, it's, more power to them, but they're, they're there every morning, evening. There's a gentleman that, this is the front shelter, is kind of a fitness venue and, great, you know?
I've noticed.
Enjoying it, yeah.
I've noticed a lot of families also with Oakland did play park.
Yeah.
Taking advantage of the.
And we did, we got a new piece of play equipment in at Explorer Park on Rich Art this year and that seemed to help. We've got a new one on plate for Alexander Park over on the south side this year, so we're pretty well caught up with our playgrounds and then we'll start the process all over again, kind of like the chief and his vehicles, it's, it's us and playgrounds.
Perfect. You have, yeah, go ahead, sir.
You, you led, you led right into the area that I wanted to kind of discuss with you a little bit and, and how it kind of relates to the budget is I want to know if you need any help or you need funds or anything to help, but it's interesting, you guys can generate money. You're one of the few agencies, you know, departments in here that actually can generate revenue, right? So that always interests me. And so then the other side of that is I do believe in, like the gentleman you talked about with the group of folks, I'm familiar with that. That's a citywide deal. People are coming from all over Marion County to come run our hill. And so when I saw that, I looked at that as this is an opportunity, right, for us to market our parks in a more community-based way. You know, one of the deals I think that we need to really think about here in Lawrence is that I've heard our parks are very safe or feel safer because of it sitting so co-located within the fort. I've heard that from constituents. So I guess the thing I'm getting at is what are we doing to increase rental of the parks that people are paying for the shelters that they're using? People are aware of, 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 of the building, our rec center there on Franklin, because they're all around it, but I don't know if they're still really connecting.
And Tyler and Joe Murphy from Mayor's Office initiated a, a new software, it's called TPAR and it's, and if you go to the, visitlawrenceindiana.com, you'll see the Parks section there and you can actually go online now and reserve buildings. We haven't gone full blast with it yet because of the COVID situation, but once this is all over, we'll, we'll, we'll advertise.
What are we doing to market visitlawrenceindiana.com?
I would have to ask our IT people.
What, I mean, this is really cool. What are we doing to market, and that kind of goes into the budget, of visitlawrenceindiana.com? I think this is awesome and this is, this is really where we need to go.
So we were just now, I mean, the art, that website's only been live for maybe six weeks.
Okay.
So part of it's we're, we're just getting started. On the second part of that, we have, if you go to the, our billboard that's at 56th and Pendleton Pike, we've got a restaurant promotion up there to visit our local restaurants that also has the visitlawrence.com hash, or URL on there. We also have a Parks billboard that's up on Pendleton Pike as you're coming into Lawrence from the east that is promoting our parks, so basically we're just getting started, but we, we expect to kind of rotate those billboards as a starting place with parks, restaurants to get people to come to that website. Obviously, social media helps as well, but that's kind of where we are.
We have enough money, you think, in the, in the budget to keep that type of program going and, and, and maybe even expand? I just think this is really great. I think we need to let people know.
We do and in fact, we've, you know, if you recall back in, and let's be honest, I mean, I, I personally think these billboards have been very effective.
I think so too.
For the city. And the first, the very first one we put up back in, whenever it was, 2017, was actually on I-69. And the day it went up, the Mayor's Office got a call from an institution like requesting, hey, can we, can we do this? So I think our next step on that is we've been focusing on the ones inside of Lawrence because there's obviously a lot of traffic, but I think for next year, to the extent we can and make it feasible, we would like to go back out onto either 465 and 69 specifically with restaurants and parks. So I'd say stay tuned for that for next year.
I think it's great because what we're doing, I'm starting to realize, I talked to some cyclists, they're treating our, the whole fort almost like a park in a sense.
Yeah.
You know, and so that, with all that looked together, it made me see the connectivity and I just want to make sure that we're supporting, giving you guys the, the things you need to keep us connected. Thanks Sean, I appreciate it. Thank you.
One question about the mowing, just because you brought it up. Could you clarify what it is? You mow, do some of our youth parks mow?
Of course, all the park locations, we do the government center here. And I think, sorry, the street department does the firing range now, but we, we do have the government center. It's the only thing outside of city parks that we, that we do.
And, and I know this was in your meeting, but, in the Parks meeting, but the, there was a discussion about mowing within the diamonds, the ball diamonds. Does the, the youth leagues mow within the baseball diamonds or do it?
We had one group that, that were doing their own mowing, we do that all now just to have it all in-house so we can keep better track of it.
Was that a cost savings for you or did that feel better on?
Probably not, but it's liability savings for us.
Gotcha.
Didn't have outside contractors out there doing things that's on park property that we didn't know about, so.
Excellent.
Brought that all in-house.
Counselor Chavat or Chavis, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
No, no, thank you.
All right, well, thank you sir, I appreciate it, appreciate it. And I know utilities is not, oh, did you want to add?
I just wanted to add one thing.
Yes sir.
So back on the revenue for Parks Department, so one of the new attractions for later this year is a, a synthetic ice rink for Civic Plaza, so the Lawrence Christmas will be centered around that and that'll be a several-week event for the skating with skate rentals and all of that, so we have some projections on that, but there is a potential for new revenue out of.
You gonna get me on ice skates this year?
There's a revenue source right there. That's a $10,000 video from. That's a $10,000 video from, make us funny, some videos.
And the credit for the skating rink goes to Tyler in the back room, however, he also has the revenue projection, so he must follow through on those.
All right. I know you're home to it.
Thank you, and I know utilities, you came out tonight, but I know you're not within the scope of this, uh, committee, but thank you for coming out and, and, and sitting with us. And, uh, Mayor Collier, is there anything you would like to add? I really appreciate you, uh, coming out with your entire staff and team here tonight.
I tried to give you a chance to add one more step, but you wouldn't do it.
All right.
I'm good, I, you know, I can say this about this guy so often, but I am very proud of what you have planned with this budget. I know I always appreciate your questions, it helps you understand what we're doing, what we have to do. I said, you have some great budgets and I think some white guys have a change of response.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. And, and as I've told, uh, Counselor Fenwick in some of our meetings, this is just a tremendously professional budget that he puts together, a book, it's very easy for us to understand and then the citizen's guide, which is a, a smaller version, which we can hand out to folks to, to take a look at and get an understanding, uh, of what we do. Do Counselor Chavis or Counselor Shavat, do you have any further questions?
No, sir, thank you, Chairman.
Um, I did want to make sure that we had discussed this and I want to make sure that, um, the, the council budget.
Yeah.
Um, we need to take a look at that.
Yes, so, uh, Controller Fenwick, you had, uh, proposed, uh, a slight amendment, which was the, the counselor budget. Support our discussions.
Uh, yes, if you look at, uh, ordinance eight, so the version, for those who are here tonight physically, the version that's been, uh, handed out is an amended version. Uh, the general fund budget i- is now reading as $25,507,393,000. The only change there was increasing the council's line item, uh, for projects, which in the book was 100,000, so I raised it 150, so it is now at 250,000. So that's the only change that's been made and that is currently the amended, uh, ordinance number eight.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you, Controller Fenwick.
Uh, J, hold on real quick, Jason, you, you said ordinance eight, you mean proposal eight or?
Uh.
Looking at the.
Yeah, it's proposal eight, uh, we got it in PDF form, Tom, so I couldn't change it to proposal, but yeah.
The.
It's in upper right, just to be clear, and what was circulated by email earlier today, Tom, the updated numbers in the upper right-hand corner have a generated date of 9:21, or in other words, today.
Okay.
At 1:02 PM, so you know you're looking at the correct one. The one that was circulated.
So wait, are we talking?
On August date.
Uh, so let me ask this, um, are we talking about the 5%?
No.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, okay, thank you.
We're just talking about the ordinance date with the, yeah.
And just to clarify, the ordinance eight, uh, is a gateway form, so we, we can change, uh, there's the first paragraph at the top where you see Lawrence in bold, we add that, we add the fiscal body and the date of adoption and then obviously we add the budget numbers, but the rest of that for, form, you can't change. And that's the state's terminology on the, on that form, so.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So with that, we'll just run down the, the agenda then and, and talk about these individually, but, um, do I have any motions then or discussion on, uh, the amended ordinance?
Amended proposal eight.
Amended proposal number eight.
I think the first need a motion to amend that proposal in committee.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to accept the amended version.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? The motion's been, uh, we have a motion and it's been seconded, any discussion?
No.
Do we need to take a roll call?
Take a, just all in favor, yeah, by roll call since there are.
Okay, so we'll take a all in favor by roll call. Um, Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes.
And then you need a, uh, motion on whether, uh, do pass.
A motion to adopt?
Yeah, a motion to adopt. So thank you for everybody for your indulgence, this is the first one of these committees I've ran, so I appreciate the, our, my, uh.
You're doing a good job.
I appreciate it.
You're doing a good job.
Um, so Tom, you have an emotion to adopt, is there a second?
It's a do pass.
I have a motion to accept and to move to the full, do pass to the full council.
I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
No.
All right, so the same process, uh, Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. So that has, will be moved into the, the full council for discussion. All right, so, uh, then for proposal number nine, uh, fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, um, did we have any discussion on that?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, the, the proposal's been, uh, a motion and seconded, any discussion? Nope, so the same process? Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? All right, I feel like Kathy's supposed to be reading something here too, I'm so used to the.
Not on committee.
Yeah, not on the other part. All right, so then for proposal number 10, uh, same thing, do we want to recommend this to the, uh, uh, full council, I'd take a motion? This is fixing salaries of appointed officers, employees of the police department and fire department.
I'd like to make a motion for recommendation to full council.
Thank you, Counselor Giles, I have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
All right, so everybody got in that one. All right, all o's in favor, Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? And then for proposal number 11, I believe we have a little bit more discussion, uh, that's the establishing compensation for elected officials for the city of Lawrence of Indiana.
I'll make a motion, we accept the amended ordinance?
Uh, Tom, I don't think we've talked about what those amendments are publicly, we probably need to take that for the record.
So we'd like to go ahead and take the controller's recommendation of amending that to 5%, just like the other salary ordinances.
Controller Fenwick, since you were stepping up this way, before you go back, could you explain a little bit about what the, the amended proposal actually is?
Uh, yes, so the amended proposal increases the salary of all five of the elected officials 5%. Uh, per our discussion last week, it is also, uh, will not be handed out as a form of a salary increase next year, it's just increasing the salary ordinance itself. Um, part of the reason for that was, the discussion last week was, over the years, this ordinance has tended to be neglected when it comes to increasing it in line with either inflation or with what the rest of the city is doing. So at least by increasing the ordinance, even though there won't be increases handed out for elected officials next year, it will hopefully keep this ordinance in line such that five years from now, if you look at our peers, we're all kind of comparable to each other.
Excellent.
And Jason, on what was circulated earlier this afternoon, you just, you've made the city clerk just a flat, it had like a 5%, we, we just took that to zero, right?
Yes, so yeah, this is, I guess, the, well, it's still the first amended.
Still the first amended, exactly.
Yeah. All right, so could we redo the motions, just so we have it clear on the record then,
Got a motion on the amendment?
I'll make the motion to accept the amended version.
I'm sorry. I'll second the motion.
All right, the, the amendment's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, we'll take our vote, Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. All right, thank you, do we have any other items?
You have to, you now do pass.
Oh.
11.
Oh, and we do pass.
Pass the amended version.
So we passed the amended version to, oh, that was the accepted movement.
Yes.
Yes, so could we now take a, a motion to, um, move the amended version to the full council?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, recommend to full council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, so, uh, just do a roll call vote again, Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavat?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. Thank you for catching that and helping me out. So, uh, as I said before, uh, I think that, that hit all of our items on the agenda. Did anybody in the committee have anything else they would like to, to add?
Mr. Chair, do you want to just remind the public when the budget hearing is planned for?
When is the budget hearing for Plan Four?
Jason, is the budget hearing still scheduled or planned for, uh, the 5th of October?
It's the 5th of October, isn't it?
Yes, um, just, that's a good point, I'll run through where we currently are in the.
Please do.
So yes, the next planned budget, uh, actually, next week, what is today?[1763.54]